Well, welcome you all to the Middleton City Hall. I'm going to call the meeting of Middleton Common Council for October 16, 2018 to order, and the first item is the roll call.
Oh, you want to counsel first. Oh, it's different on my agenda.
I asked you to put the other one.
I know, and I thought I did, sorry. Coon?
Here.
Burke?
Present.
Teal?
Present.
Olson?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Rashard?
Here.
Ramsey's absent.
He's not feeling well.
Oh, no.
Okay, so Dean, you call the meeting to order now.
Yeah, I'll call the meeting to order of the Middleton-Westport Joint Zoning Committee. I'm Ken Sipsma, and I'm going to act as chair tonight. I think I'm the vice chair until we get a new full chair. And so I'm going to have everyone simply announce themselves, since I don't know Hubbard.
Murray?
Ross.
Kennedy?
Sipsma.
Okay, so the next part is the public hearing on the rezoning of several properties within the city's extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction in the town of Westport in order to certify that area/district under the State Farmland Preservation Credit Program in ordinance to repeal the and recreate section 10.96B-1-2-3 and 10.9680 relating to agriculture preservation zoning and farm preservation credits. So this is a public hearing. Anybody wants to speak now? So Tom, you have something to say?
Yeah.
Yes, but I was.
Okay, okay, Eileen, go ahead.
I won't get too close to the microphone to spread the germs. There are, I think I explained it in the memo, if there's any questions, we can talk about it. This is more or less housekeeping. It's designed to allow farmers that are farming their property in the town of Westport to apply for farmland preservation credits. Anything that's not zoned egg exclusive but is being farmed and wants to have the credits needs to be rezoned to egg exclusive. Anything that's already zoned egg exclusive but is being used for another use is being rezoned to more appropriately what its use is. And there's about 60 properties, and there was a map that you got in your packet that shows the properties. There's a few changes that we just wanted to mention really quick. One of them is that there's an area, Dr. Wagenki has property that's zoned Plan Development District in the extraterritorial area. He's got a lot, and then he's got two flag lots that go to Q. The easternmost flag lot of that property is zoned PDD, and the map needs to be changed to reflect that. The westernmost property of that flag, that parcel, needs to be rezoned from A1 exclusive to A1, so that's a change. The Burkittolo property that's zoned A1, or would be rezoned to A1, needs to have a restriction with it that only, the only farm animals that are allowed are horses, because otherwise there might be.
That property had two classifications on it, RH4, which is rural homes 4 acres or less, under our code, which is county code, and A1X. It was bought at two separate times, and it needs to be rezoned to one classification, and because of its size, it needs to be A1. When they received their RH4 classification, under county's code, RH4 actually allows you to have a certain number of animals, but it was restricted by the town at the time to just horses, and the owner wouldn't carry through the ability to have a horse or two, because it's a small parcel for that. So that's why that request.
That's good, thank you. And then a third thing is that the joint committee would be pursuing, and the town of Westport changing the status of the Loffenberg Farm that's north of Northlake on our land use map to be egg preservation, because they want to continue farming it. So in order for them to get farm credits, even though it's already zoned, I think, A1 exclusive, it needs to show that on the land use map. So we'd be pursuing that in the future. We wanted to mention that.
To certify the district for the other folks to be able to get farmland preservation tax credits, since the comprehensive plan shows that it's a future development area, it can't be zoned A1 exclusively. It has to be taken out of that classification. So that's why now we request it to be A1. They haven't been able to get the tax credits anyway on that parcel, because the area hasn't been certified, because we have the zoning classifications out of compliance. So we're asking to go back, not tonight, but we'll work up the documents to preserve that layer, to change that around a little bit, so that that farmer as well on those two 40-acre parcels can get tax credit.
And the fourth thing is, we would like the joint committee, in their recommendation to the council, for the rezoning and the ordinance changes to make it subject to any minor changes that the state would require for certification. The county's already approved the documentation for the certification, which is a big thing, and any, you know, some minor changes or cleanup, if you could approve it with that caveat. And then also, I just wanted to thank the council and the joint committee for having a joint meeting, because it's a lot easier if anybody did want to participate for them to come to one hearing. Also, I don't know if you mentioned, I don't think you did, but we held an open forum input, public input, last Monday, the 8th, from 3:45 to 5:30 at the town, and we did have about four or five people come and talk about it. So just to, letters were sent to all 60 property owners, so they would know about it, and so anybody had the opportunity to talk about it.
So there was specific notice given to this area and of that public informational meeting to the people that were going to have zoning classifications changed. And we've, in Westport, we've had a few calls, I think that Eileen had a few calls, and mainly, I think, for folks to understand, it's really just, it's actually helpful in some of the circumstances, because we have a lot of smaller parcels here, like in the Larwood Hills Development, north of the city, that are actually residential parcels, but they've been zoned A1 exclusive through, and they haven't been rezoned over the years. And so this would rezone them to proper zoning, which would be county R1, single-family residential.
Okay.
And those are the kind of things we have. We did this in the Village of Wanakee in their extraterritorial jurisdiction, and we had to deal with the Mary Lake neighborhood in Westport. So it wasn't like 10 or 12, it was more like 70 parcels that were still A1 exclusive, for whatever reason, history, no changes, no sales. And so this will help them if they have sales. You had a number of people ask about that particular one. Under the county code, if you had a single-family residential parcel, and it was less than 35 acres, you were basically, had the uses as an R1 parcel sold. Nothing's changing here. They have the R1 uses in ordinance, and they'll have them after the next, hopefully. So I didn't know, Mr. Chair, if you wanted any further explanation, we can give more, but it seems like, Eileen, that should step aside, and there may be people that would have comments or questions.
Anybody else who wants to speak, yes?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, but I don't believe I opened a public hearing on behalf of the committee as well. I know you did, and I was sitting here.
Go ahead and open it, so that's.
The public hearing is open as well for the joint zoning committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Yes, please go ahead. Could you please come to the mic, identify yourself, and you have three minutes.
I'm the one, I don't know, there might be others here. I'm from Larwood Hills, and mine is the.
Excuse me, could you state your name?
Oh, Virginia Martins, and I live at 5055 Hardy Trail in Wanakee.
Okay.
And I assume I'm in the town of Westport. But according to this, if it was A1 exclusive on our lot, when I had to build on my lot, I had to deal with Eileen here, and she was very helpful. But what I'm after is information, if this is changed to R1, will it be in the town of Westport? Or does it, would I go to you?
It'll be in the town of Westport, but it's in extraterritorial zoning, correct?
Yeah, but how is it going to be changed?
The only, it's not. So when we had our public information meeting, we did have a couple people from that neighborhood show up, and the question was, what's going to change if I'm zoned A1 exclusive now? What will change when I'm zoned R1? And the answer that our staff gave was nothing. Right now, you're zoned A1 exclusive in the city of Middleton's extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction, here in the town of Westport. The only thing that's going to change is your classification to R1. Under the code, when you're A1 exclusive, you only have the uses that are allowed in R1 anyway. So actually, what's happening here is that your property is being made conforming. In the long run, it would assist you for a sale, you know, if you wanted to do something else with your parcel, sometimes building inspectors ask to have certain things done with your property, but it'll make it all conforming. So this is, for those properties, it's very helpful. It's similar to what happened in the Mary Lake subdivision when we just fixed them.
So.
So it doesn't change your taxes, it doesn't change your jurisdiction.
Yes, it, you know.
Because you are, you're taxed as a residential parcel, or you're assessed as a residential parcel, you'll still be assessed as a residential parcel. Classification doesn't really make a difference right now at all, because you're R1, but not really be R1.
Yeah.
And the reason.
Would it make it, is there any difference on, like, we pay for Middleton's Fire Department? Is that?
No.
There's no difference with your.
No jurisdictional changes at all.
No.
The reason, Ms. Martin, that you've had the pleasure of dealing with Ms. Kelly is because for, how many, how many years have we had our agreement?
Two thousand.
Yeah, so for 18 years, the town and the city of Middleton have had this joint zoning agreement, and so because of where you're located in the town, that zoning overlays from the city of Middleton, and that's why in the past you've dealt with Eileen Kelly, and you would continue to do so.
Well, I just assumed it was, you know, because we're right next to Henry Loffenberg's farm, so I just assumed, okay, maybe there's 10 feet on my lot that belongs to.
No.
Okay. My questions have been answered.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak? So, well, if nobody wants to speak, I'm going to close the city part of the public hearing, and.
And I will close the public hearing for the joint zoning committee.
Okay, so now you want to vote, and then city council to vote.
So can you tell us, procedurally, we're recommending to the council, so are we going to take our action first?
Yes, you would take your action, and we would hope and recommend that you recommend to the city council that they adopt the ordinance language changes that are proposed, and also the changes to the classifications that were proposed on the other ordinance with Eileen's four comments as condition.
Okay, because I see on the agenda here items three and four. Do you want us to, if I'm looking at the right agenda, hopefully, do you want us to?
Start with two.
Yep, yeah, start with the ordinance language.
And so what you'd be doing is you would be recommending the proposed ordinance that changes the zoning code language.
Okay, two I see as public hearings, so am I looking at this wrong?
No, two is the recommendation and action on an ordinance.
Probably.
Item three for us, I believe?
Yes.
Okay.
It could be because I, sorry about that.
Yes, there it is, because you have a call to order.
Okay, I'm a lawyer too, so I gotta just know this. Do you want us to do three recommend, go to council, or three and four recommend, and then go to council? How do you want us to proceed?
I think they should, well, I, it doesn't really matter, but I would just soon see you do three and four, and then.
And make your recommendations. Okay, so for the joint zoning committee, then, we are on item three. It is the action and recommendations on an ordinance to repeal and recreate section 1096-8B-1 and 3, and 1086-8C, if I'm reading that right, relating to agriculture preservation zoning and farmland preservation credits. Is this the one that has the comments?
Subject to any recommendations that the state may have.
Okay, and that would be subject to any recommendations. We can take a motion on that, we can have some discussion on that here, if.
Let me do that.
Okay?
I'll second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation on item number three. Any discussion on that? Yes, sir.
I have a question. Do you see any downside with the Westport community action?
No, there's no downside. It's all upside. And the upside is, we now have, in one fell soup, all conforming classifications. That's a good thing. And the other good thing is that for the town of Westport's owners, they now will be able to qualify, for those that can, for farmland preservation tax credits. So from the city, you now got a whole extraterritorial area that finally has classifications that have one-acre parcels with homes on, zoned A1 exclusive, but R1 like they should be. So there's no downside, except for the work that we talked about that I had to do.
That's my first question, I wanted to talk about that.
Any other discussion? We've seen this identical process with the Village of Wanakee and our joint planning and zoning with Wanakee, so I'm certainly comfortable with it.
The plant commission and board did recommend this as well.
Great, thanks. If there's no further discussion on item three, then, all in favor of approval, say aye. Aye, post say nay, and item three is approved. Item number four, then, is an action and recommendation on a zoning, excuse me, on an ordinance rezoning several properties within the city's extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction in the town of Westport in order to certify that, the area/district, under the State Farmland Preservation Credit Program. And any other comments from staff on this one?
No, just, we're talking about the Wankenki property.
Specific changes.
For specific ones.
Okay, all right, we can, I could take a motion on this one?
I'll move that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, discussion on that? Anyone like to ask any further questions or discuss? Yes, go ahead, please. Oh, sorry.
I have to try to.
Anything else? Okay, hearing no discussion, other discussion, all in favor of approving the motion, say aye. Aye, post say nay, and the motion is approved. And.
Now, we need to approve it, and then you adjourn. So, okay, I need a motion for our item number three, the recommendation and action on an ordinance to repeal and recreate section 10.96-8B-1-3 and 10.96-80 relating to agriculture preservation zoning and farm preservation credits.
So I'm going to.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, so this will be the first reading of the ordinance?
I don't think, okay, I will let you answer that.
We not had a, we not had a first reading?
We can also waive the.
You can waive the, yeah, we can.
My motion.
Okay.
My second also included that.
Okay. Thank you, Mark, good question. Okay, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone post, so the motion passes. Now, the next one is the recommendation and action on rezoning of the several properties within the city's extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction in the town of Westport in order to certify that area/district under the State Farmland Preservation Credit Program. Need a motion and waive the second reading.
Is it subject to the same conditions that the joint committee?
Yes.
Yes.
All approval, and waive it.
Okay.
And I will second that.
Okay, any questions?
Just real quick question. I know this is a couple of specific items, is there, is this a contentious issue with anyone, or is this, everybody is like, full speed aheads?
I can answer that.
If I ask a question, yes.
First of all, there has, there's only been one property owner that's concerned, and that was the one that we talked about, Mr. Loffenberg, and we're going to try to deal with this question, because he would like to get his farmland preservation tax credits. But to be able to get that, we have to zone it to A1, to get the district certified, then we can work on doing the changes that he wishes. So his is more or less a timing, timing issue. So otherwise, everybody else is, we had four or five people, like, tonight, where we've had to answer questions, and then it's kind of like, boop, the light goes on, and everybody's happy. And just, and just so the city council knows, not only has the town of Westport Plant Commission and the town of Westport Board recommended this, but your joint zoning committee recommended it. Also, Dane County Land and Water Resources, Dane County's planning and zoning had to look at this, because they had to look at the map to make sure that it complied with their farmland preservation plan. They recommended it. They did it much quickly, quicker than they did for Wanakee, so I'm not sure what that's saying. And then also, the state of Wisconsin Department of Administration has to review the map and also the zoning classification, and they've also approved this. So this is a, this is a four jurisdiction deal. So that's, it's really, it's quite unique in Westport. This is the third time that I've had to do this, and so I'm really very happy that the city council was doing this, and that I can say, I think I've done this for my lifetime.
Yeah, yes.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we did vote on it. What, no, all those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone post, so the motion passes. So Ken, you can adjourn, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, adjourned, all in favor, say aye.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Aye, post say nay, you adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Except for Howard, who I.
Sorry, we didn't have cookies for you or something. Leaf was supposed to bring them. He forgot.
Yeah.
Somebody have to listen to me?
So Lori, we are ready?
Well, you want to show up for the finance committee meeting.
Okay, we're going to start city council part of the meeting, and I'm going to start by recognizing we have the Boy Scouts and the Boy Scout leaders from Troop 140. Could you please stand up and be recognized? And the scout leaders as well. They are learning about the citizenship, and they have to earn the citizenship badge. Okay, so the next part of the meeting, the comments from the city resident present, limit to three minutes per speaker. Anybody who wants to speak?
My name is Mike Davis, 7413 Elmwood Avenue in Middleton, and I wanted to introduce to all the council members, our new ICMA fellow from Malaysia, Amika Sangaran, who is here.
Hello.
Hello.
And welcome her for all of you. Hopefully, you will have a chance to spend some time with her in various activities over the next four weeks. She'll be here through November 10th. So we're very delighted, once again, to have her. She has a focus on sustainability and environmental matters, and she works for a private social enterprise that produces sustainable products, as well as events, and I'm sure much more. But that's as much as I've gleaned for now, and it's called BG.
BG initiative.
BG, BG, so if you think of the BGs, you'll remember where Amika works. And she works in Kuala Lumpur, which is the capital of Malaysia.
Well, thank you, Mr. Davis, and welcome, Amika. Anyone else who wants to speak? Okay, I'm going to close that part of the meeting, and now we are on to the presentation, and this is the Public Lands Flood Updates. Matt Amson.
Good evening. You may have seen the document in front of you recently in Mr. Zen's paper. Wanted to come and highlight a few things, answer any questions as they relate. This is a project management chart that I put together to kind of illustrate staff time and commitments over the next year. I think a lot of this is dependent on funding, and we really haven't talked about funding for the flood recovery. I know the first option is to put our eggs in the FEMA basket. I know Mike will probably throw something at me, but I'm, I'm growing concerned about what level of support we're going to have from FEMA, not because I have any great intel, but because I watch the news. And as hurricanes and devastation continues to affect the country, I'm growing concerned about what level of financial support we're going to have for hurricane, or for the flood recovery effort. So we'll wait. If, there were times where it did. So this kind of lays out those projects as we've identified them. I don't know that this is an exhaustive list, but it's, it's some of the major things. The first item, you can see the parking lot repair at Penny Klein Park has already occurred. You approved a quote earlier tonight for the dog park fence, which is actually the airport fence repair. It doubles as part of the dog park fence. So that will move forward. In addition, we're hopeful that at the end of this week, the loop trail through the main Pheasant Branch Conservancy north of Century will open. Earlier today, Custom Manufacturing started work on repairing the bridge just west of Harbor Village, and once that work is completed, we'll open the entire southeast trail, which is currently open to Marina Drive. Additionally, crews have finished work on the trail around Stricker Pond, and that is now mainly back open. It's traversable, it's probably not perfect, but it's safe for users to use. A lot of the rest of this repair work is really going to need design and engineering services and, and construction, and we're really looking at, especially with the Creek Corridor, that that, the 2019 would be a year of planning and design, and that the likely earliest construction would be 2020. That's a message that I've been trying to get out as I speak to various groups and involvement with the Friends of Pheasant Branch, and I think the first thing that we typically hear is, is good, because that also goes with an understanding that we want to avoid this level of damage in a future event, so that we take the time to properly plan and make sure that we're doing what we can in replacing the infrastructure to limit future damage. Happy to answer any questions or talk about anything more specifically. As we wait right now for FEMA, and as I understand it, we're really waiting for the declaration before we can proceed with any of this work, is that they want to, once a declaration's made, they'll sit down with us if a declaration is made, and go through a scope of services of work, so we're waiting that next step in the process at this point.
So I just want to add that the Teedman Pond is still very badly flooded, and Stricker Pond is much better. I actually did walk around the trail, and the Public Works is doing a great job to pump water as much as they can, so.
And, and just to add that piece in, I know Sean and the Public Works staff have been busy working on a solution for Grabber Pond, and trying to potentially begin pumping that down as early as, as tomorrow. There's been a lot of discussions back and forth with the DNR, and I'll defer any further discussion of it to Sean.
And you want to update it?
We're going to need more time than this.
Okay, okay, all right. Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Matt, much of the trail system, Conservancy is, abuts the creek itself, or the stream bank. Terms of prioritization, are you looking to Stormwater Utility to get their work done before you start planning, or is there, are you planning a coordinating effort here?
I think.
Because at some point, way the creek is running through the Conservancy today may or may not be the way that the engineers and designers anticipate it will be two years from now. So it seems to me that that's a process that has to happen first, before recreation can put trails back in, or put bridges back in, so we need to understand what's going to happen to the stream bank. to happen to the stream bank and whatever flood storage is required throughout that corridor before we can even think about putting any recreational trails back in there.
It's, it's a critical step in not only the, the Pheasant Branch Creek Corridor process, but even in Tiedemann Pond. Before we put recreational infrastructure back around Tiedemann Pond, I think we have to know what opportunities there are to improve the water management at that site, as well as, we have sections of the South Fork Trail and North Fork Trail that had significant washout, where the, the predominant issue is how the creek bank is restored so that we can put the trail back in or, or remediate that issue. Same is true with the bridge that extends to PPD. The abutment was washed out, but you can't put the abutment back in until the creek bank is, is stabilized. But to, to answer your specific question, Mark, obviously, the study that, that Stormwater Utility is, I, I think there's an agreement tonight, and then tomorrow night at Water Resources, potentially to review that with Cardno. That's a critical step, and I think we have to know more about how that study's going to unfold and the timing of it before we can move forward with an RFP to look at, at the recreational infrastructure, and that the two are going to have to, the, the recreational infrastructure has to build off of the stream bank work and the, the, I know there's a five-year plan that's coming, and that's going to have to coincide with, with any recreational improvements as well.
More questions for Matt? Yes, Howard?
Sean, not Matt. While I got you here, while I got you here, you mentioned Graber Pond was going to take a little more time, and I don't want to belabor the point, but back when Graber Pond was planned initially, long time ago, it's the only remaining natural kettle pond in the city. It's not.
It's, it's one of four. We, Tiedemann and Stricker and Esser and Graber.
They're all detention basins for stormwater.
They all function as detention basins to some degree, but they're all kettle ponds.
Master plan for Graber Pond, because I wrote it, says that it, it's a natural pond to be left alone, to rise and fall as it naturally occurs. Are you planning on monkeying around with that?
I am.
Turn that into a stormwater basin like the rest of them here in town?
It, it is functioning to some degree that way. There's runoff directed into that pond.
Runoff, directed runoff into the pond?
I'm sorry?
No stormwater runoff into that pond?
There is.
Where?
Graber Road, the adjoining businesses, and the tributary drainage area.
Businesses and the drainage area, I will agree. I'll, I want to talk to you.
Sure.
Sounds like you and I've got a difference of opinion on what ought to happen. I'm just going on the master plan that's in, currently in place for that particular pond.
Sure. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so the, then we move on to item number two, Downtown Plaza Planning Process Update. Abby.
Hello. I just wanted to give you a brief update on the status of the planning for the downtown So, I think you probably know all of these people by now, but just in case, this is your downtown plaza advisory team, made up of appointments from seven, seven different entities. We have Rochelle Ritzenhaller, who is our volunteer public input facilitator, who's doing a lot of work for us to compile public input pro bono. She's also a downtown Middleton resident. Van Nutt is our chamber appointment. Dr. Colin Connors is our appointment from the Downtown Middleton Business Association. Kathy Olson, representing the Common Council from District One. Zoe Schuler is representing the Tourism Commission. She also owns a boutique store in downtown Middleton. We have a new appointment from the Historic Middleton Station Neighborhood Association. Robert Stapichovich, who was previously serving, has moved out of downtown into Madison, and so our new appointment is Joan Ziger. And David Reed represents the Middleton Plan Commission. The three members who have asterisks by their name, Rochelle, Kathy, and David, are also serving as the downtown plaza core team, so they have attended a lot of meetings, doing like more of the day-to-day recommendations about the plaza. This is our design team. The city has contracted with Psyche Design for landscape architecture services for the plaza, and that is Ken Psyche and Julia Schilling from their office. Peter Fortlich is handling surveying and some engineering work. Gail Simpson and Ars Georgiades are from Actual Size Artworks. They're part of the Psyche Design team. Taylor Gothorp is our mechanical engineer. Kelsey Richmond is our electric, electrical engineer, and Melissa Rodriguez is from Knothy and Bruce Architects on the team, and she's also a downtown Middleton resident as well. The timeline to date has included January, when the council distributed the request for proposals for design. February was when the advisory team reviewed the six proposals, narrowed it down to three finalists. In March, the downtown plaza team interviewed the three finalists and ultimately made a recommendation to the council to select Psyche Design. In April and May, we held four public input meetings. We had two billboards on the site, and also a really fun social media campaign. In June, Psyche Design met with the downtown plaza core team. In August, Psyche Design held a meeting to present some concepts to the city. In September, the downtown plaza team reviewed the concepts, narrowed it from four to three. That's a, a picture that was taken during that meeting. If you have not seen the three concepts for the downtown plaza yet, there's still time to check them out. I have the website linked at the bottom. You can review option summaries for the three options, the nest, the mounds, and the bowl, and you can also click on links on our city website to view the video files, where it actually zooms in on the, the image, and it helps you get a better sense of what the three options are. Until Sunday night, we had a link on here for a public survey that has now been removed. The, the public comment period has now been closed. We received forty evaluation cards at a public meeting that we held, and we had a hundred and ninety responses to our online survey. So, Craig Brewink, who's Mike's intern, is working on compiling all the information into one big Excel spreadsheet, which is going to be presented to the downtown plaza advisory team this Friday. So, in terms of the timeline moving forward, we are in October. The public input period is now closed. We are compiling the public input, and like I mentioned, it will be presented this Friday. We are targeting a date of November 20th for the, the city council to first get a look at the concepts, as well as the cost estimates, and potentially, as early as November 20th, make a recommendation on which concept to proceed with. In December, we would expect that Psyche Design would finalize the plans for the public plaza, so that we can bid the project in the winter and get more favorable pricing with spring and summer construction. Just again, that meeting that's being held on Friday will be held in Conference Room B, because we have early voting happening in this room. It's at nine AM. It's open to the public. The meeting will include a presentation of the three concepts, including construction cost estimates, and a review of the public input received, and then, potentially, if, if the plaza team is ready, a recommendation for one of the three concepts to move forward to the Common Council. Does anybody have any questions about the process?
Any questions for Abby?
Only that there, um, thank you. I know there has been a couple of, of questions or comments from one commenter, in particular through email recently. Are, are some of the issues that have been brought up being addressed or discussed about multiple levels being places where either water can pool or runoff from, digging down into this, this city plaza area? Are those kind of thoughts and concerns being addressed, I guess, by the, the group?
Yep. So, the first question, stormwater management. Psyche Design has, has a lot of experience handling stormwater on different projects. This, the, the concepts that you're seeing, they're, they're still conceptual, so they have not gotten to the level of being prepared to develop the stormwater management plans. But Ken Psyche has told us that he's confident that he can handle the stormwater. He knows that he can get the site to drain. He's not concerned about being able to handle stormwater on the site. It may be that some of the concepts look like, if you scale it out to the person next to them, they look like they might be seven or eight feet down, when in actuality, they may only be two or three feet. We, we just haven't gotten to that level of construction detail yet. To your second question, I think you might have been alluding to concerns about environmental contamination on the site, so just to address that upfront, because we have heard concerns about that from one individual. And we have met with Tom Culp of True North, who handled all the environmental work for the site. He's reviewed all three of the concepts, and he has no concerns about moving forward with any of the three concepts. We have detailed environmental work for, for the plaza site, and we know that they brought in four feet of clean soil. Where there is contamination that we do need to avoid is on one point on the plaza, it's labeled GB 24 on a map that I have in my office for anybody who's interested in, in learning more about it, and that contamination is PAHs that exist eight to 10 feet at, at the earliest depth that we would hit, those would be eight to 10 feet. If we decide to go that deep at the GB 24 site, which, again, we have no plans of going anywhere near eight to 10 feet, but if we, if we did, then we would have to haul off some of that soil and have it landfilled, and it is expensive. You have to truck it, landfill it, you, you, there are additional costs associated with that. But again, we have no plans to go that deep at that part of the property, and likely not on any part of the property.
Any other questions for Abby?
And we do have on file a closure letter from the DNR. We also have on file an email exchange between the consultant who did the work, the environmental work, and the contact at the DNR clarifying, even further clarifying the closure letter that we have in hand. So, you know, when we acquired this property from T-Wall, T-Wall went above and beyond to pay all the additional costs necessary to make sure that that site would be clean and ready for our public plaza.
Abby, thank you very much. I appreciate that added information.
Thank you, Abby. Okay, now we are on to approval of the consent agenda.
Approval.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? All those in favor of the approval of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Anyone pause, so the motion passes. Now, we have three proclamations, and I'm going to read one at a time, so. Proclamation, National Friends of Library Week, October 21st to 27th, 2018. Whereas Friends of the Milton Library raises $40,000 annually to provide the resources for standing room-only public programs such as author visits, children's storytime, reading programs for children, teens and adults, and so much more. And whereas the work of the Friends highlights on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunity for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning, and is an economic driver, bringing not only Milton residents, but also people from surrounding communities to Milton at more than 1,000 a day. And whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with community outreach, adult learning opportunities, and teens and children's services. And whereas the Friends gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all, for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now therefore, I agree the Premier of the City of Milton proclaim October 21st to 27th, 2018, as a Friends of Libraries Week in Milton, Dane County, Wisconsin, and urge everyone to join the Friends of the Library and thank them for all they do to make our library and community so much better. This proclamation was adopted at a regular meeting of the Milton Common Council on 16th day of October 2018.
Thank you, Mayor. Jocelyn Sansing, Middleton Public Library Director, and on behalf of all of the staff, our volunteers, and the library board, I would like to thank the Friends so much for all of the support that they give the library. It's truly a great example of the level of civic engagement that can happen at a larger, at a larger platform, and it is a joy to be a director where we have that level of engagement. So, in honor to accept the proclamation, I would like to introduce our Friends of the Library Board President, Karen Natoli, along with our Library Board President, Cindy Zellers, and our Library Board member, and also Friends of the Library Board Member, David Reed.
You guys want to stand up?
And just in case any of the council members aren't members yet, I brought my shirts.
Here, I have a, one on. Do you have your pen? On better paper, just in case.
Thank you. Congratulations. Really appreciate it. Picture.
Oh.
I'll move approval.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone pause, so the motion passes relentlessly. So, the next one is proclamation recognizing the Put Poverty on Ice Event and declaring October 26, 2018 as Community Action Day in Middleton. Whereas the Wisconsin Community Action Program Association, WISCAP, is comprised of eighteen member agencies in Wisconsin working to fight poverty and help people achieve economic self-suff, self-suff, self-sufficiency, and whereas, community action agencies in Wisconsin contribute major programming in the areas of affordable housing, weatherization, food security, employment, and entrepreneurship, head start, community economic development, health and education. And whereas, in 2017, 243, 551, almost quarter of a million people, low-income and working poor residents of Wisconsin turned to community action agencies for assistance. And whereas, in 2017, WISCAP member agencies helped more than 6,000 families obtain or maintain affordable housing and served nearly 200,000 people monthly with emergency and food assistance. Whereas, WISCAP and its member agencies have helped to start over 20, 200 businesses and create over 6,000 jobs through their statewide management and implementation of the Wisconsin Department of Workforce Development, Job and Business Development Program. And whereas, the Madison Capitals are an ice hockey team in the Eastern Conference of the United States Hockey League, and plays its home games at Bob Suter's Capital Ice Arena in Middleton, Wisconsin. And whereas, the newly renovated Bob Suter Capital Ice Arena represents Bob Suter Capital Ice Arena represents significant local economic investment and a commitment to expand Milton family entertainment. And whereas, in 2017-18, the Capitals participated in over 30 community events to support local organizations. Whereas, WSCAP and the Capitals have joined together to present Put Poverty on Ice night to raise awareness on the issues of poverty in Wisconsin. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Gurdeeparama, Mayor of Milton, do hereby proclaim October 26, 2018, Community Action Day in Milton, and recommend this observance to all our residents. This proclamation was adopted at a regular meeting of the Milton Common Council on 16th day of October, 2018. Let's give these guys a big hand.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. The proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 2018. Whereas, while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, it remains the most commonly diagnosed cancer and the second-leading cause of death among women in the United States. And whereas, each year, it's estimated that more than 250,000 women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and more than 40,000 will die as a result of the disease. And whereas, October is the Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign to increase awareness about the disease. And whereas, during this month, we reaffirm our commitment to support breast cancer research and to educate all citizens about its risk factors, detection, and the treatment. And whereas, as we display pink ribbons and wear pink clothing to raise awareness, we also support those courageous fighting breast cancer and honor the lives lost to the disease. And whereas, this October, we recognize breast cancer survivors, those battling the disease, their families and friends, who are a tireless source of love and encouragement, and applaud the efforts of our medical professionals and researchers working to find a cure for this deadly disease. And whereas, Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an opportunity to unite all citizens in our community to prevent breast cancer deaths through increased education and regular screening. Now therefore, I, Gurdeeparama, Mayor of Milton, do hereby proclaim October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This proclamation was adopted at a regular meeting of the Milton Common Council on 16th day of October, 2018.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Okay. We are on to the agreements, and the first item is the Storm Water Management Systems Agreement with 6720 FLWLLC.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. So the next one, number two, is the approval of Water Management Agreement with Corico Aquatics for Walter Baumann Aquatics Center.
Approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Item number three is Assignment of Hangle Land Lease Lot 22 330A Delta Lane from Ted Davis to James Stevenson.
Blue Pro. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Next, item number four, Public Service Agreement with Liturgical Publications Incorporated for Senior Center Newsletter.
Move to Furl. Second.
Any questions or comments?
I have just maybe one or two questions, real quickly. There's kind of an evergreen clause in here. It requires 180 days, basically half a year, advance notice to cancel this at the end of term. Just wondering if that's, I think the city attorney is going to be looking at this contract anyway. I would wonder if there's a chance to reduce the length of time. It's on page 48 of the packet, or page four of five of the agreement. Number five, renewal. It says
Yeah, I see where it says.
And I don't know if 180 days is something that is negotiable by them, but I don't like evergreen clauses that just automatically renew.
I know Larry had had some discussion about a variety of these provisions, and it worked out. I'm not sure if that one was addressed, but we can, along with the other issues I'm looking at, I'll bring that up. Check with him, see if that's been discussed.
I'd appreciate that. And then tied with the concerns that I heard at the Finance Committee, there might, one option might also be looking at the term of three years and seeing if it might be possible to knock that down to one or two years. That gives us a chance to understand how this contract works, how, you know, how these flyers, newsletters work, and that we're all, as a common council, happy with that. So that might be an option, is to look at a shorter term for initial agreement length.
Those are on the list.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of deferral say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. The item number five, Agreement with Own Tax Systems Incorporated for Cyber Security Assessment.
Approval is recommended by Finance. Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the approval of this motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously.
Aye.
Oh.
Howard's opposed.
Okay, 7-1. For 6-1. Item number six, Agreement with Associated Appraisal Consultants Incorporated for Assessment Services for 2019 to 2022.
Approval is recommended by Finance. Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion of the agreement with Associated Appraisal Consultants say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so this does pass unanimously. Item number seven, Storm Water Management System Maintenance Agreement with State Bank of Craft Plains.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve the Storm Water Management System with State Bank of Craft Plains say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Next one is the Agreement with Cardinal Incorporated for Design Engineering Services, Faz and Branch Stream Bank Assessment and Five-Year Plan.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving this motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes for the Agreement with Cardinal Incorporated. Item number nine, Agreement Between the City of Milton and the Milton Professional Police Association Local Number 427.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the agreement between the City of Milton and the Milton Professional Police Association Local Number 427 say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so Chuck, you're free now, so. All right, so number 10 is the repeat of number earlier, and number two, so we're going to skip that one. And move on to the Ward of Bed Court Professional Services. Ward of Court to Bolly Tree and Landscape for Tree Removal, removal of 30 trees.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to approve the agreement with Bolly Trees to remove the dead trees, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. So the next one is the Ward of Court to Struck and Irvin for Airport Fence Repair.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion to Ward the Court for Struck and Irvin for the Airport Fence Repair, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Now we are on to the Budget. Item number one, Budget Adjustment Water Conservation Program.
Move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments?
Just a real quick question, if I could. I don't have a problem with this at all. I just was curious if we know what this $35,000 improvement is that's being suggested?
Yes, it's a request from Galena Management Company for their individual residential units, and it would be toilet replacements, so going to the high-efficiency models.
Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, any other questions? So all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. And item number two, Direction Regarding Publication of a Budget Public Hearing Notice.
Recommended by Finance. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of the approval of the publication of the Budget Public Hearing Notice, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. We are on to miscellaneous. Item number one, Discussion and Possible Action Related to the Phase Construction for the Milton Bike Park Improvements.
But we defer, as recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of this motion to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes 6-1. Next one is the Approval of Task Order 18-04 with Strand and Associates for Design Services related to Phase One of the Milton Bike Park Improvement. So I know the answer here, so.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of this motion to approve the task with Strand and Associates, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Item number three, OPEB Valuation of the City of Milton.
Move approval is recommended by Finance.
Second.
Any questions or comments? These are the other post-employment benefits, actuarial liability study. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Item number four, Recommendation to Fill the Vacancy in the Municipal Court Clerk Position.
Move approval is recommended by Finance and Personnel. Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of this filling the Municipal Court Clerk Position, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Recommendation to Fill Vacancy in the Sustainability Coordinator Position.
Recommend approval by Finance and Personnel. Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 6-1. So now we are on to the ordinances. First reading, final action may be taken on approval of the motion to suspend, rules under section 1.07, Milton General Ordinances.
I'll move approval of the ordinance and also make a motion to suspend, to go to final reading.
Okay.
Second.
So this is the item number one, the ordinance to mend the hours of work and vacation provision. So the motion is to approve, and all, any questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So the motion passes unanimously. Next one is the ordinance to establish 30 miles per hour speed limit on high road.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? There seem to be some, yes, Howard, and then Robert.
No, I think he's saying that he made the motion, right?
Yeah.
I have a question, though.
I want to get Sean up here to explain why.
Thank you. That's my question.
Okay.
All right, this we have time for.
I guess the short version is, between the town and the city, there is shared jurisdiction on a section of that road. The town, in 2014, reduced their speed limit from 40 to 30 without coordinating with the city. When I wrote to the town engineer asking what the rationale was for that, because it seemed enforcement would be practically difficult, I just, I didn't get a response. At the time, the city elected not to change our speed limit, which, as you might imagine, has been causing confusion among drivers as to what the proper speed limit is on that piece of road. And that depends which direction you're traveling, and where you're traveling. So we've elected just to match theirs, not with any particular rationale, but at least to avoid confusion.
It's a rationale.
It's one thing, I guess.
Consistency can be a very good thing.
Yeah, I don't expect good compliance with it.
I always like buzzing up to 40.
But the numbers
Thank you for the explanation.
Any other questions, either to Sean or anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to, the ordinance to establish 30 miles per hour speed limit on high roads, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion passes unanimously. Item number three, An Ordinance to Change Composition of Public Arts Committee.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Opposed.
Two to, five to two, okay, or two to five, all right.
That was his first reading.
Yes.
Okay. On to the resolutions. Item number one, 2018-49, Approving Easement Agreement with 6720 FLWLLC.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments, or do you, anybody wants to explain? This is on, this is in Milton Hills, right?
Yes, this is 6720 Frank Lloyd Wright is the main building that has recently been sold, and they are fighting an easement and redoing the storm water that drains into one of the detention ponds.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Otherwise, all those in favor of this motion approving the easement agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, the motion passes unanimously. Item number two, 2018-50, Encouraging the Wisconsin State Legislature to Close the Dark Store Loop Holes That Shift a Greater Tax Burden from Commercial to Residential Homeowners.
Motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
A resolution. Thank you.
Yes. So any questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion All those in favor of this motion say aye. Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Item number three, 2018-51, Approving Emergency Access Is meant with Whispering Pines LLC Across City Lands. Any questions? Joanna, yeah?
Nope, sorry.
Okay, then all those in favor of approving the emergency access is meant with Whispering Pines say aye. Anyone opposed, so the motion passes unanimously. Item number four, 2018-52, Declaring End of Flooding Public Emergency in Milton.
Move approval.
Need a second.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of this motion declaring the end of flooding public emergency in Milton say aye. Anyone opposed, so the motion passes. Item number five, 2018-53, Endorsing Dane County's Budget for Additional Storm Water Funding and Resolution to Study Lowering Lake Levels and Other Storm Water Initiators.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
What, I, I apologize, what, how far down is, are they considering dropping the lake this time?
Oh, this...
Actually, this is to set up a study group to look at it, to drop it, to look into the feasibility of dropping it. I think the important thing to know is, since May 1st, it has been at least one to two or three feet higher than the state mandated level. So some of it would be to look into getting it at least back down to that feasibility, to get it to that level.
So it's a long process, there's a committee already formed, and they're studying it, and they will submit their report sometime next year, so, but there's a...
Well, the committee is supposed to be, have their results...
I think in February.
February.
Yes.
And one of the things is just to figure out how to get the water from Mendota down to Kaganza reasonably fast. And there's a lot that needs to be done for that.
And the problem there is...
Thank you.
Problem there is that all those dams have been open since 2016. The problem is the weeds and some of other pinch points, and so a lot of work needs to be done. Okay, any other questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion say aye. Anyone opposed?
Aye.
So the motion passes six one. Motion to adjourn.
Move.
Okay, we are adjourned.